It looks like we have everybody here who is joining us this evening. So I'd like to reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board was in executive session since 6 o'clock this evening to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. If we could, please start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I'll do introductions. With us this evening from the Board, we have Meredith Moriarty, Chris Meyer, Christine Beck, Wendy Sampson, Willow Bear, and myself. Jonathan Fishbein had a personal matter this evening. We also have Jody Monroe, Dave Hurst, Judy Kehoe, and I think I also saw Kathy Johnston. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 27, 2020 regular Board meeting. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next on the agenda is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. The first thing I wanted to address was our voting process update. So I'm going to turn it over to Judy Kehoe to share where we are in that process. So everyone has the most current information.
Good evening, everybody. Since the Governor's Executive Order was released on May 1, we have tried to communicate to everybody that this would be a very tight timeline for holding our vote exclusively by absentee ballots. We had a number of questions surrounding the order itself and how to apply it. We had school attorneys from all across New York State conferring with one another in order to give us the guidance that we needed. Once we received that, we adopted the budgets and then we began the logistical work to carry out the Governor's order. Bethlehem and the hundreds of other school districts in the state began vying for suppliers to print the four envelopes that are included within the ballot package, printers to print the ballots in envelopes, and arrangements with the Postal Service for the first-class postage on the bulk mailing, along with a special permit to only pay for the ballots that were returned to the district. To give you some context about this, normally Bethlehem sends out 250 absentee ballots. Based on the executive order, we're now sending over 8,000 ballots. So if you magnify this by the number of schools in the region, you can perhaps begin to see why this task compression types of issues relative just to the scale and the timeline of what we've been trying to accomplish. We've been following all of the statewide news clippings for school districts, and there has been story after story of these envelope shortages and delays in the receipt of the ballots by the public. As you can imagine, our community residents are quite upset. We did provide dedicated phone lines and a dedicated email, but our staff over the last few days have been receiving a high volume of very angry phone calls, complete with allegations that we're delaying the ballots on purpose, that we're masterminding a fraudulent election. We very much understand the anger that we're hearing. Many of the callers have stated that it is their intention to vote the budget down. We've put a lot of effort into complying with these new requirements and planning for every contingency. But at the end of the day, we have been subject to some very real time constraints based on the high volume of services going through third parties and all on an abbreviated timeline. So frankly, I don't know anyone who is pleased with the situation as it has been unfolding. We did advise the community that ballots were expected to be mailed by June 2. We hoped that it would be sooner, but indeed, it was June 2. Per the Postal Service, first-class mail takes two to three days to arrive, even with the special logos that we put on all of the envelopes, that it was election material, and to please expedite. We are not aware of any residents who received their ballots today. We do anticipate that the ballots will begin arriving tomorrow. Voters will need to fill out their ballots when they're received and promptly mail them by Friday, if we hope to receive them by the June 9 5:00 p.m. deadline. We have purchased and installed an exterior ballot box at the front of the high school. So if voters want to have guaranteed delivery of their ballots to us, they may choose to drop the ballots off. I do have poll workers who are scheduled to work from 5:00 on Tuesday, the 9th, when the polls close, until late in the evening on the 9th. And we hope to have everything tabulated by night's end. The counting will be livestreamed so members of the public can witness the work that we're doing to count up the ballots and to provide the results. There is absolutely nothing that is routine about the executive order that we received and the manner in which we're required to hold the school election this year. We fully understand it's disruptive to the community, it's disruptive to the district, it's vastly more expensive to conduct the elections in this manner. Usually, it costs us about $5,000. This year, it will be closer to $50,000, based on all of the printing and the postage-related costs. We do fully understand the situation and the emotions, and we're all feeling them too. We just want to assure the Board and the community that we will continue to do all that we can to enable all votes to be counted.
Judy, if somebody is expecting to get a ballot in the mail and they do not receive one, what should they do?
They can call that dedicated number, they can email us. We have made arrangements for people to pick up their ballots. Monday, we have all day reserved for people to come by by appointment. We would ask them to show ID, and then we would give them the ballots. And then they can cast them and put them right in the drop box if they would like at that time. We're trying to do all we can to make sure they can have their votes counted.
Any other questions on this topic?
Judy, I'm curious if you know how many people who weren't on the original poll list that was created called and asked to be added this year?
We started out with about 7,300, just shy of 7,300 names on the poll lists, and we are up to about 8,400, I believe it is, as of now. So almost 1,000 have been added to the rolls, and more are coming. Again, the phones were ringing all day long with people either wanting to confirm that they were on or to still be added. So we're mailing them out as we get them and trying to keep things moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay. I also just had a couple of other announcements. Last week, I sent out a communication to families asking for their thoughts or concerns about reopening our schools, since we do have committees in place to begin looking at that. As of today, I have over 250 responses, which I am, will be compiling and sharing out. This will also be shared with staff who are currently working on the reopening plans based upon the current guidance. So I should have that available next week sometime. I also have had a few questions regarding the extended school year program, and there's some misinformation about whether or not that's happening. We are having extended school year. Per the Governor's Executive Order, though, that does have to be online. Kids can't be at the buildings for in-school, in-person attendance. So I know that the Special Education Department has been reaching out to families who qualify to attend the program. Unfortunately, we have, there have been many families who have expressed that they do not want to participate if it is continuing online, understandably. So we understand that people are fatigued with some of the online learning. But we are still planning to move ahead with the program, and we will be offering that. And finally, I want to, I think Brittany has a slide to share. We have, this would, tonight would have been our reception for our teachers who are receiving tenure. At our last meeting, we honored our retirees. And so I'd like to take a moment to recognize our teachers who are receiving tenure. For those who aren't familiar, tenure is a three- to four-year process. Teachers are evaluated multiple times a year by multiple supervisors. And I'm happy to be recommending the following teachers for tenure, which is later on in the agenda for the Board's approval. So I would like to recognize Mackenzie Barrett is a special education teacher at the middle school, Andrea Barcom, an elementary teacher at Elsmere, Jessica Brown, a special education teacher at the high school, Ashley Karkner, an elementary teacher at Eagle, Olivia Cawthorn, a science teacher at the high school, Bill Clermont, the math supervisor, K-12, Kristen Connor, counseling supervisor, K-12, Lee Denning, a school psychologist at Eagle, Corey Fong, who's an art teacher at the high school, Patrick Gilde, industrial arts at the middle school, Maria Hayes, a family consumer science teacher between the middle and high school, Leah Katsakis, an elementary education teacher at Slingerlands, Caitlin Lentile, a science teacher at the high school, China Markucci, a guidance counselor in the middle school, Jennifer Mills, a special education teacher at the high school, Justine Nygros, a library media special at the high school, Monica Parmeter, a library specialist at Eagle, Giovanna Prezio, an art teacher at the high school, Andrew Ricker, an English teacher at the high school, Mackenzie Regal, an elementary teacher at Glenmont, and finally, Alicia Wilson, a social studies teacher at the high school. So unfortunately, we are not able to recognize them in the way that we have in the past. But I would like to recognize them in all their hard work and celebrate their recommendation for tenure. So that is my superintendent's report.
Judy, can I say one thing real quick?
Sure.
Just in terms of the ESY, there just was a frustration this week, and I just want to clarify because summer camps could open. And so there was a frustration in a lot of the world of parents with special needs that summer camps could open, but summer school couldn't. And I just want to remind people, it's a state decision. It's not, Bethlehem didn't decide to close ESY and make it distance learning. It's a state decision, and you know, we would love to have it in-house, but we can't. But it was just that double whammy of that. Your kids can send them to a baseball camp, but they can't get the, you know, the extra help they need. So it's just frustrating for parents to hear that.
Yeah, I think that that definitely was a frustrating message for people to hear. And we were really hoping that we could have students onsite because, you know, it's a small number of students. We could easily kind of keep them spread out in different locations. And we thought it would actually be helpful for us in thinking about our reopening. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like that's going to change. But yes, it was, I know people were frustrated about the day camps being approved.
How many students do we have participating and how many opted out?
We usually have between 130 and 150 kids who participate on any given year. I don't know if we know exactly how many have declined yet. I don't know, Kathy, do you have a number yet?
We were sending on Friday an email with a little survey to every one of the families to find out. Some families had indicated they'll maybe take a related service, but not the whole program. So I have a survey going out to all, everyone who was approved through annual review. They'll receive that on Friday from the ESY coordinators.
So can I just follow that up? Because we actually got the survey today. And what I'm wondering about is the online learning portion of it. Is it our expectation that it would be similar to what we're doing now, where kids sort of like get a list of things to do and parents have to help them do it? Because as a parent of a child who receives special education, he is doing absolute, he's not learning anything. It's not working for him, the remote format is not working for him. So I don't know if we thought that ESY was a place where we would try something a little more intensive or a little different, and that might impact parents' decision about whether or not to put their kids through two more months of...
Sure, sure, yeah. Willow, we are working pretty closely with Capri, Jimbo, Cee's, and a few other districts, attempting to put something a little bit more creative together, which was really why, and I was like the cart before the horse, but I was trying to figure out how many families were definitely not going to do it. So I had a better sense of the numbers as I tried to put something a little bit more creative together. Bosse's is trying to also help districts with more creative online outdoor activity. So, you know, we're working daily to try to come up with some different ideas. Jody was right, we really were very hopeful that we were going to be able to have this smaller group spread out throughout our schools. But since that didn't work, we're trying to come up with other plans, so.
I mean, I think even just thinking ahead to next year, where we could very likely be back in a situation in the fall where everybody is scrambling out of school buildings again, I think it's worth the energy to continue that work to think about what be a more conducive environment, especially for special ed students.
Yeah, that, we're, absolutely, we're doing it with many districts in the area to try to figure out the best way to do that. So I wrote something I'm doing all day, so.
And I think, Willow, to answer, also respond, I think that if thinking about reopening, we are, obviously, that's one of the pieces that we're looking at, is what does the instructional program look like, whether where, you know, all our kids are back, part of our students are here certain days. There's lots of different options. But I know that we recognize, we've had these conversations that, you know, for a longer term, looking at it for a whole year, where possibly we could be fluctuating between different models. We need to have a little more guidance, a little more clarity. There needs to be a little bit more expectations on what it looks like. You know, we also have to be mindful that it looks very different when you're talking about elementary-age students, special education students, ENL versus, you know, juniors and seniors. So, but that is something that we're well aware of, that things have to be a little more, I guess, planned out. We have more time to plan out for the fall.
Yeah, and just the creativity of it, you know. I don't mean to at all imply that my son's providers aren't doing an amazing job of trying to engage him. It's just, when you have a child that needs that much one-on-one, and then you combine that, unfortunately, with a parent who's working 18 hours a day, it's just, it's a bad recipe. And I think that, given more time to think it through, there's probably a lot more creative ways that we could figure it out. So I trust that you guys are doing that, I just wanted to.
Yeah, thanks. We are. That's all I had for my superintendent's report, unless anyone has any further questions.
Next on our agenda is the Board report. And I just wanted to say that I think that the, you know, the past few days, past week, I think have been, have been very challenging for our community and for our nation. And I think it's apparent to me that we, as a district, need to do more to confront racism head-on in our schools and in our community. And I really hope that next year, the district continues with the work that we started with Generation Ready to address equity issues and to improve cultural proficiency in our district. I think, I mean, even just the, you know, access issues that I think became even more important during the remote learning. And we all saw, saw issues that just really became apparent. And I know that there is a lot happening over the summer with respect to school reopening and making those plans. But I just feel like it's really important that we don't, we don't let this get lost and that we don't let it fade away as something else takes over the news cycle. You know, I really hope that we continue actively to look at our curriculum, particularly in social studies and in English, to make sure that we really are educating our students about racism and racial injustice and implicit bias. You know, I know we had a presentation in December that looked at the English curriculum at the high school level. And I do think that we, you know, there were some comments made by the Board at the time, and I think they are now even more important to go back and look at those reading lists and see, do we need to change them in some way? Do we need to add so that we have more representation by authors of color on those lists? And are we also bringing those topics, not up just at the high school, but also at the middle school and the elementary school? Because I think that they're, it's, they're critically important at every building level. And, you know, to the extent that we can, and again, I say again, I know there's so much other stuff happening this summer. But I really want to advocate for reaching out to our teachers and continuing to work with them and provide them with professional development and guidance about how to talk about these issues. Because one of the things that has, you know, really become so apparent to me is that I think we don't talk about them enough. And one of the reasons that we don't is that people are afraid of saying the wrong thing, and they're afraid of being criticized for saying the wrong thing. And so they just don't say anything at all. And that's not what we want. We don't want, we want our students to be talking about these things. And, you know, I've heard a lot of comments and stories from people in our community. And I hope that we can also figure out a way to hear from our students and our families, particularly our students and our families of color in our district, to really know what they're seeing and what they're hearing, what they've maybe been keeping to themselves and not talking to us about, because they don't feel like they're going to be heard. And this is not something that is going to be fixed overnight. That would be, you know, it's impossible to do that. But I really hope that the district keeps the conversation going and commits to doing that work going forward. And, yeah, that's my, those are my thoughts tonight that I just wanted to share.
Thank you, Holly. I would just want to echo everything you just said. I really appreciate everything you've got out there. I agree that it's, this has been a very difficult week for everyone in our country. But I know that we can, in the middle of all this, really think about what we need to do moving forward. I know that we are in the middle of an educational crisis right now in terms of our response to the pandemic. I know that the fall is going to be taken up with a lot of concerns about the day-to-day operations, how do we keep our students safe and healthy, our community safe and healthy. But as Holly said, I just want to make sure that these concerns don't get lost in the middle of all of that. I also wanted to just ensure that we are looking out for our students who may need some help right now. They're dealing with not only the crisis of school closure, possible economic results of that, but also, you know, the news and all of this emotional work that is being done regarding racial inequality. And I hope that we are available to our students right now who are dealing with this crisis, with our Counseling Department, and also for teachers who don't know what to do right now, who don't know how to respond right now in the moment. I hope they know that our administration is there to answer their questions about what they should be saying to their students right now. I appreciate, Jody, you sent out the email this morning with a lot of resources. But I just wanted to reiterate that our administration needs to be here for both our faculty and our students who need help and support. So thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just say two things real quick. And one of them, Holly already said, so I'll just say this, the, looking at the English curriculum once again, because that was mentioned earlier about looking at books, you know, because I mean, so many of the books that they read are classics, they're great books. But to have books that, you know, represent different people would be fabulous. The other thing that, something that I'm working on as well is that, you know, is the idea of implicit bias. Just the idea that, you know, you don't wake up and think you're racist. You don't think that you have these things, and then you realize where you are in life. And, well, maybe, maybe some of these things have that ingrained in us, you know, unintentionally, and we're just not aware of them. And so that, teaching kids that idea of implicit bias, and whether it be, you know, with race, or class, or gender, or whatever. And just working with students on that idea, just to see life through a different perspective and realize what they have that others may not.
I wanted to, I went to Washington Park, and we happened to come across the parade. And it was very interesting to watch, it was very moving. I definitely welled up when I saw everybody marching together and how emotional everybody was, and the variety of people that were walking and community members. And I'd like to see our school definitely get more involved in some inner-city activities where we can integrate our students more. I think that'd be wonderful, community building. But I did want to say, on behalf of the district, I know, Holly, you were saying we have to do more, and we certainly can always do more. Charmaine, who was a prior Board member, had, has been, was passionately working on diversity within the school for the nine years she was on the school board. So we have been making small movements towards making sure our curriculum has more Black history. How can we integrate it into our classroom? And there is some reading, and obviously, we can integrate more. But I don't want to make a blanket statement, I think that's where we get into trouble. There are a lot of teachers who are currently working on ensuring that that kind of information regarding Black authors and more Black history is integrated into education. So I just want, I wanted to be careful, because that has been something that the Board has been working on. And I think as a district, we are moving in the right direction, probably faster than a lot of other school districts, and we can always do more. But I just want to make sure that we give credit where credit is due, because we definitely have been doing that. And it is a really challenging time. And I always give this story, too. We had a student who was biracial. And, you know, we didn't have a lot of clubs or activities that might identify with Black history. And I happened to go on a college visit with one of my children, and I saw this student there. And what was interesting was her friend group was completely different than the type of friend group at Bethlehem. And I think it's because we didn't offer those opportunities. And so I hope and encourage that we do that for not just African-American population, but of all other races too, that we are more inclusive and look to have that built into our model. Thanks.
So, the only thing I wanted to add, because Holly had a lot of the things that I would have said, so I'll spare you, but I did, in the last couple of days, read and hear a lot of really heart-wrenching personal experiences that students and families in the district now experience all the time and experience in our school buildings that were just horrifying to me. So, we did start working with Generation Ready, I know that we've committed to it, I know that we've acknowledged that it's a problem in the district, and that it's something we are intentionally working on, creating a more inclusive environment. But I, can you just tell me, Jody, what the next steps were supposed to be for Generation Ready? Because I know we got a little bit disrupted, but like, what's the concrete next thing we're doing?
So, where we left off with Generation Ready is, if you remember, they completed Equity Walks and then provided us with an assessment of where we were on the continuum that we spoke about. And so, every level was coming up with or has, at least, if not fully drafted, action plans for something that they could bring back to the staff in their own buildings. Elementary was doing it across the buildings K-5, and then middle school was working on a different action plan in secondary, or high school was as well. So, that was one of the next steps to implement the action plans, which didn't happen because of the closure. And then the other piece that we had talked about was how to bring, you know, with part of the action plan was getting the message out to more of our staff, and exactly, I think, Holly, you had mentioned that some staff are more comfortable with these conversations than others, and how do you help staff who are not comfortable? You know, if you make a mistake, it's okay to make a mistake, but you need, we all need to be able to have these conversations. And then the other piece we had also talked about is how do we engage the community in some of these conversations as well? So, that was kind of our plan, and I don't know, Dave, you were involved, I think, with the K-5 Action Plan, Dave Hurst, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, we actually were, had one meeting left before the closure, so that meeting was where we were really going to dig even deeper into our work and formalize the action plans, so we were sort of like stuck mid-phase with those. So, the plan is to continue that work as soon as we're able to get back together again. And again, utilizing consultants as needed, as we clearly are not experts in this field. So, utilizing, you know, folks that have been doing this work for some time, and with districts throughout the country, definitely helps guide our work.
And I should say that on the committee that has been working on this for over a year now, there's about 50 staff members, so all buildings and levels are represented fairly well.
Anybody have any other thoughts or comments they'd like to share at this point?
Just to congratulate all of our tenured recipients and thank them for all that they've done, and we're happy to have them.
And next on the agenda is our recognition of submitted public comment. We did get three comments this evening, and so I will read those you now. First, from Edmund McMahon. "I write to express to comment on two issues. The first concerns the handling of the vote-by-mail process. As you know, the statewide rules require votes to be received by the district no later than June 9th. We were notified by postcard over a week ago at least that our ballots would be mailed on or before June 2nd. Having not received my ballot as of today, June 3, I called the district and was informed the ballots actually had been mailed out behind schedule but should arrive by tomorrow. The person who answered the phone, who, by the way, was courteous and informative in every respect, said that if I did not want to rely on the mail to be ensured my vote was counted, I could place the ballot in a drop box outside the high school on June 9th. Your website does not prominently highlight these important details, but instead buries them amid other information in the website's description of the vote process. This is not the way one would expect the board to handle a vote if it actually wanted a broad turnout. Second, I intend to vote against the school budget, and although I was unable to participate in the recent online budget hearing, I want to explain why. While the budget as a whole increases by roughly 2.7%, roughly half the increase is driven by a 4.9% increase in the largest spending category, teaching regular school, which consists mainly of instructional salaries. The current teacher's contract expiring at the end of this year has a 28-step schedule that even in the absence of a new contract will assure all but the most experienced teachers of pay increases ranging from just over 2% to roughly 4% depending on step levels. As I write, the general economic situation and outlook for state and local finances is the worst since the Great Depression. More than 2 million New Yorkers are unemployed, including countless numbers of residents of this district. Most privately-employed district residents who still retain their jobs have seen their pay reduced, and the vast majority certainly don't expect a pay increase for the foreseeable future. Like the Great Recession, this downturn is disinflationary, characterized by falling private wages, ultra-low interest rates and returns on savings, and stagnant or reduced prices for items also, including motor fuel. Unfortunately, the budget numbers suggest a business-as-usual approach with no contract concessions forthcoming from the district's labor unions. Your proposed tax levy increase could be largely eliminated if wages and salaries could be frozen. At the very least, such a freeze of base pay and steps for at least two more years should be a primary goal in the current round of contract negotiations with all district unions. In the meantime, given the economic situation, I respectfully submit to you that it is not fair for the district to impose any tax increase, which is why I will be voting no on the main budget and the proposition, and urging friends and neighbors to do the same. Sincerely, Edmund McMahon." The second comment is from Patrick Jean-Pierre, who writes, "Dear Board of Education, thank you for the opportunity to share my comments. I'm a taxpaying community member. I'm also an educator in a nearby district. My family is very diverse. We are both Black and Brown. My daughter will be potentially enrolling in one of your elementary schools in the upcoming year. However, I am very concerned of the lack of diversity in both district and building staff. I would like to continue living in Delmar, but if the diversity in staff does not drastically increase, I will take my taxpaying dollars elsewhere. It is important that my daughter can see herself in your leadership and teaching staff so that one day she can aspire to be an educator as well. In addition, it is important to have diverse staff so that white students can also not grow up with biases and misconceptions about their Black and Brown brothers and sisters. Last, please provide in detail what you are doing to respond to current events related to George Floyd. Please share what you are doing to increase the diversity of staff and also your response to current events. I will be watching tonight's board meeting for your responses." And then the third comment came in from Cindy Abelis, who writes, "I would like an update on the June 26 drive-up graduation now that Phase 2 is in full swing. An outdoor graduation has been brought up to you on several occasions, utilizing the football field or other fields. Have you considered holding outdoor graduation at a later date as the phases are now opening? Jody, I didn't know if you wanted to comment at all on the end-of-year plans, whether there is any update on that?
So, currently, we are planning the drive-through process, which I talked about at the last meeting, where students would be able to drive up in a car with their family, in their cap and gown, they would receive, we would have a table podium set up at the front of the school where they could get out of their car, we'd have a professional photographer there so they could get their photo taken in their cap and gown where it says, you know, Bethlehem Central. We also plan on inviting all of our faculty and staff to participate, and they can line up around the school building. The police heads will be helping us in regards to traffic flow on Van Dyke and around the backside of the building so we don't have a jam of cars. And we would break it up into two different sessions, so half of the student body would be given a two-hour timeframe, you know, I don't have the times, 9 to 11, and then 11:30 to 1:30. And then that evening, there would be at the Jericho Drive-In, everyone could go in a car, there's enough capacity, and that's where they could watch all of the speeches for the evening. We do not have approval to have a large gathering on the football field due to the number of graduates we have, and certainly, obviously, then, parents as well, so we don't have any approval for that.
Is there approval process that we could do? Because I think there are some schools that are doing it outside, and if it's, we have the ability to social distance, is there any guidance on that?
I think the schools who, at least I've heard of, who are considering doing something outside are smaller schools who don't have the number of kids that we have. There is no, to my knowledge, there's no way that we can submit a proposal for approval like that. DOH said that they won't approve anything because, and then, so therefore, the town or the police can't approve it because it's not in line with the governor's orders of no large gatherings.
So, well, I guess, I guess, I'm just wondering, like, if restaurants are able to open and have people sitting at tables or outside venues, is there a limit on the number of people that could be in an outside venue? Is it 50 still, or?
I thought it was still 50%, but I'm not, I think, that's my understanding, but I'm not 100% sure. I think the governor just made some comments today about outdoor dining.
Right, it came out today, so I think things are changing regularly, and I just hope that we keep an eye on it. I mean, even if the parents couldn't attend on the football field, but we could have the students, I mean, it's something that could be streamed or videotaped for the parents to have, and it's more for the students anyway. I just hope we're going to keep an eye on that to see if there's some ability to do that. And then the other question I had was, there was some discussion about allowing, because a lot of the kids had talked about closure, and having them be able to walk the one hallway or, you know, a designated area, is that still being considered?
It is, but I don't, right now, we've been advised not to allow that many kids in the building, as of now, but again, things could change, they are changing regularly.
Advised by?
Through BOCs with the Department of Health.
Okay.
That, you know, the one challenge is that because everything's changing, the high school staff are, you know, have to make plans if we're having, hiring a professional company to put together the speeches and things at the drive-in, you know, they need time to do that. So, that's the challenge, I guess the timeliness is the challenge we're under right now of when things will change.
Okay. Yeah, because I do hope, you know, I'm just, obviously, I have a senior, so I do have a vested interest in this. I hope that we can find a way to allow at least the students, even if it's one by one, to walk, you know, through the hall, maybe to the front. If we can, you know, put something together, I know that the senior celebration team was looking to do something and help in that aspect. So, I just, I want to encourage, if we can do it, that we do do it, and I know it may be a little more work, but I would like to see it obviously happen.
Yeah, I think we would, too. We think that it would be a nice thing to be able to offer the kids, so we're hoping that that's an option that we can, it would probably have to be some kind of an individual, you know, where they're...
Yeah. Little tape on the floor, don't get too close.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, Judy, I'm wondering whether we can update our website right on the front page to maybe put a couple of points to clarify about the voting, and, you know, if you did not get your ballot, this is what you should do, and here's where the drop box is, like, some of that information so that it's right there on the front. I think that might be helpful for people so they don't have to click through to find it.
Sure. We'll all work with communications and make sure it's prominent on the website.
That would be great, thank you. And, Jody, and I did want to ask you, because of the comment that we received, if you wanted to comment at all on, you know, efforts that I know the district makes to increase diversity in its staff, and if there's anything you wanted to add specifically with that respect.
Sure, so we have, that is an area that we have addressed, not only with, within the Equity Committee, but also with our instructional leadership who, you know, oversees the hiring process. We put together an entirely new hiring process guidelines for everyone. We talk about bias in the hiring practices, and we have made concerted efforts to reach out beyond just our local area to try and get candidates that perhaps wouldn't necessarily consider applying to Bethlehem. And I would say in the last couple of years, we have made some movement in this area, so we're hoping that that will continue, but, you know, it is a process and it takes some time, but it's definitely an area we're focused on. We recognize that it's important to have role models, for our kids to have role models of, in teachers and staff that they can connect with for lots of different reasons, so it's an area that we definitely are working on.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda, item five, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action, item one.
So moved.
Back in.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 16.
So moved.
So moved.
Back in.
Any discussion? I will just also add my congratulations to all of the individuals that are receiving tenure, it's fabulous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through two.
So moved.
Back in.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
So moved.
Back in.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item six, future meetings and events. As discussed, Tuesday, June 9, all absentee ballots are due at the school by 5:00 PM for the 2020 annual budget vote and election. On Wednesday, June 10, at 4:30 PM, there will be a special board meeting certifying the election results. On Wednesday, June 17, at 7:00 PM, will be a regular board meeting, anticipating an executive session starting at 6 o'clock. And the meeting after that is on Tuesday, July 7, at 7:00 PM, anticipating an executive session at 6 o'clock.
Holly, we also have an audit committee meeting on Monday.
Oh.
I think.
Yes, we do. And I know there'll be, at some point in June, there'll be another policy committee meeting, I just, we don't think we have the date firmed up for that one yet, but I will certainly announce that one when we do. We do need to go back into executive session, so if I could have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, to discuss a personal matter.
Yes, I'm sorry, I meant to say that, to discuss a personal matter. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. So, the public meeting, public portion of the meeting is closed, and the board will go back into executive session. I believe Brittany has sent a separate link for the executive session to everybody's email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.